Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Kushner.
There.
Osborne.
Here.
Latari.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Euler.
Here. Approval of city council minutes, motion to approve writer city council minutes dated September eighth, twenty twenty five, and special city council meeting minutes dated September twelfth, twenty twenty five.
So moved. Kushner.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Latari.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Euler.
Yes.
Thank you.
Adoption of agenda.
Kushner.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Latari.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Euler.
Yes. Proclamations, five point one, proclamation for national Hispanic heritage month, September fifteenth through October fifteenth, twenty twenty five. Come on up here.
You might say it's sponsored by the diversity and inclusion commission, just so folks know.
Okay. Sponsored by the D I C commission, diversity and inclusion. National Hispanic Heritage Month proclamation, September fifteen, twenty twenty five, October fifteen, twenty twenty five. Whereas each year, the United States observes National Hispanic Heritage Month by celebrating the culture, heritage, and countless contributions of those whose ancestors were indigenous to North America, as well as those who came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, Central America, and South America. And whereas what began in nineteen sixty eight has Hispanic heritage wheat under President Johnson, was expanded by President Reagan in nineteen eighty eight to cover a thirty day period starting on September fifteenth and ending on October fifteenth. And whereas many Hispanics serve as government employees, public servants, civil rights leaders, and community organizers, politicians, soldiers, educators, journalists, first responders, pioneers in art and science, healthcare professionals, athletes, inventors, entertainers, and so much more. Now therefore, I, Bruce T. Euler, mayor, along with the city council, the city of Warrensburg, Missouri, do hereby proclaim September fifteenth through October fifteen, twenty twenty five, as National Hispanic Heritage Month. I call upon all citizens of Warrensburg, Missouri, to observe this month with appropriate ceremonies and programs to celebrate Hispanic heritage. Any witness whereof, I herein to set my hand this twenty second day of September, twenty twenty five. Thank you. Item six, first second reading ordinance, an ordinance amending ordinance five, eight, nine, two, concerning the adopted fiscal year twenty twenty five annual budget, beginning October first, twenty twenty four, presented by Jessica Denverloth, management analyst.
Hello, good evening, mayor, members of the city council. So the ordinance before you tonight would authorize amendments to the fiscal year twenty twenty five budget. The current fiscal year ends next week on the thirtieth. So this budget was adopted over a year ago now, and while every year staff works hard to develop a budget with the best information we have at the time, often as we go throughout the year, the need for amendments is identified as things pop up. So before you tonight, I like to call this kind of a year end cleanup amendment, but as our intention moving forward into fiscal year twenty six, to bring these up more frequently to you, and we'll probably review them on a quarterly basis when we bring you the the budget reports. So many of the initiatives kind of encapsulated in the amendments tonight were known to us at the time of budget adoption, but we hadn't quite realized the full fiscal impact. But all of the proposed amendments can be supported with existing revenues, grants, or fund balances. And any use of fund balance has previously been discussed in other in venues with you all. So in your packet, you have a supplement with each account and the reason for the amendment. So I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about those. I would like to also just quickly note that while the total amendment amount is around two point one million dollars, one and a half of that is just so the sewer fund has greater authority, so that we can move those Maguire expenses out of the Geo Bond Fund into that fund. So again, happy to answer any questions you might have about any of the individual amendments or more generally, but staff would recommend that the ordinance is approved as presented.
I thought the report was very thorough.
Appreciate that.
Questions, comments, Suzie?
Nope.
We have done this.
I appreciate your.
Thanks, Jessica.
Thank you.
Motion to move to second reading by title only.
Kushner.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Latari.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Euler.
Yes.
An ordinance amending ordinance fifty eight, ninety two, concerning the adopted fiscal year twenty twenty five annual budget, beginning October one, twenty twenty four. This is for adoption or rejection. Kushner.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Latari.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Euler.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item six point two, an ordinance authorizing the city manager and city clerk to execute contracts with civic organizations for fiscal year twenty twenty six annual services presented by Michael D. Schreig, city manager.
Thank you, mayor and council members. Want to recognize and our appreciation for your willingness to meet with us in three days of budget retreats in preparation for adoption of the budget. And so one of the topics that you discussed in in great detail and deliberated on was our approach to civic organizations and their request for funds. And so in the staff report is detailed kind of how we went through that conversation, the points that that you identified for as part of your deliberations and for further consideration. And I won't go over those one by one, but suffice it to say, recognition that we didn't have a lot of formality to the process, we had more requests numerically than before, we had significantly more dollars requested than years past, and so a desire to create a process going forward, but also a recognition that we're in the middle of of the budget process, we'd already heard presentations from civic organizations for fiscal year twenty six. So again, appreciate your willingness to provide some instruction for how we want to tackle it in twenty twenty seven. So what you have before you by way of the ordinance and and the the staff report is replicating funding levels as they have been in the past with one exception, and that is an additional thousand dollars for oats. They in previous years indicated a need for possibly reducing their service levels if they couldn't get more funding. This year, they indicated they're requesting an additional thousand dollars, and that is one thing that you provided direction to staff to to change in terms of funding levels. I would tell you that I've drafted a a correspondence to go to all the different civic organizations, detailing all the points in in the staff report, as well as also attaching my budget message from to try to provide some context in terms of what we've accomplished and what we're still challenging challenged by in terms of general fund funding and salaries in particular, to give them a kind of a broader context of of the decisions that we're making as it relates to the budget. So what you have before you is consistent with the direction you previously provided, and then staff is aware of and certainly prepared to implement kind of the new approach, get that built and implemented between now and budget consideration this year.
That was scary.
Not sure what that was.
Skateboards.
So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have, but the attached ordinance essentially implements the the direction you gave us previously.
I don't have any questions, well, I do have questions, but I really appreciate the thoroughness of the the letter and really captured everything there, so thank you for that work and for communicating that back out to our partners. The two questions I have are, some of these are called agreements and some are called contracts. So I'll start with that, just one question, so. It I don't, I'm, you know, clearly not on the journey, so I don't know what I'm talking about, but a little Google search told me that agreements are less formal and contracts are more formal, and so just wondering about that.
Yeah, that is a fair question, and I, in full disclosure, just replicated what we've done in years past. As we talk about reviewing those agreements and deliverables and kind of the terms of those agreements are certainly something we'll we'll be focusing on between now and the next cycle.
And this is related in probably the same answer, which is that some of them seem to have been written by probably by Adam or someone at the city, and some seem to have been written by the organizations themselves for us to agree to.
Yep, I agree with that assessment. So and just again, kind of replicating the the status quo, but going forward.
I'm not worried.
We intend to work with Adam, kind of standardize things as, and then if we have, if you have feedback about particular deliverables or data data sets that you want or additional information, we can certainly incorporate all that in the next go around.
Thank you, I just really appreciate all the work and it, like I've said before, this, given the scope and the size of the city's budget, these monies are fairly small, but they make a big difference to these organizations, and I think it's great that we're kind of getting our ducks in a row and seeing how we can continue to support the community in a way that that aligns with the city's goals and vision, so thank you for your work on that.
I'm happy to do it, I anticipate we'll have, you know, plenty of conversation about particular goals and thing priorities for us, and then as we discussed in your your budget retreats, it's kind of an equity issue between entities that have been funded in the past and and just getting word out how others can propose their submit their request for consideration.
Just to put the bow on the agreement contract thing.
Yes.
It's a specificity issue, so agreements are are, think of an understanding. So we are giving you this, you're going to generally use it. A contract would have a more specific, this is going to be used for.
Okay.
So a more distinct thing that it's going to be used for.
Gotcha.
So that would be the main difference, but yeah, I think I think this batch is already happening.
Yeah.
We, you know, yeah.
Great, thank you. That's it for me.
We just appreciate a process being started to go through this. We haven't operated with one, and I guess in the past with the city, so it'll make it more equitable and understandable, so appreciate the looking and doing that for us. Any other questions, comments?
The other question I might have would be the the Stevenson Fund and those. Are we going to come up with guidelines for how those are going to be used? And a way for for those that don't forbid it, ways to use that fund up?
Yes, yes, to all the above, so some of that is already spelled out by way of ordinance or or the provisions in terms of the dedication of those funds, but frankly, some of those dollar amounts are pretty minimal, and they create a lot more work for staff and for you than than the dollars might justify, so we'll have an opportunity to take a look at those and see kind of what those fund balances are and whether it makes sense to maintain those or whether there's a more appropriate way to spend them down.
Thank you.
Motion to the second reading by title. Kushner.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Latari.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Euler.
Yes.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager and city clerk to execute contracts with civic organizations for fiscal year twenty twenty six annual services. This is for adoption or rejection. Kushner.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Latari.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Euler.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item seven, other business, seven point one, a resolution of the city council of the city of Warrensburg, Missouri, accepting a proposal prepared by Mike Keith Insurance for property liability and cyber insurance for fiscal year twenty twenty six, presented by Kristen Dormant, Assistant City Manager.
Good evening, mayor, members of the council. Just for some background, each year we work with Mike Keith Insurance to prepare the renewal of our various insurance policies. So just as a reminder, we carry insurance under a star insurance policy that covers everything but the fire department, that covers our properties, our vehicles, our equipment, and also liability claims that people might put against the city. Then we have our fire pack policy that covers all of those things, but for the fire department. And then we also carry cyber security insurance as well, since that is something that happens a lot these days. So this year's increase in premiums is eight point one percent, and that comes out to about forty five thousand dollars for a total premium of six hundred and one thousand dollars. That was included in this year's budget, so we were pretty happy to see that eight percent increase. The only notable change to mention is that we are changing cyber insurance carriers. That's the one that we had previously was wanting to increase our deductibles substantially. So Mike Keith Insurance went out and marketed us for a different carrier to give us our same deductibles with a very minimal premium increase. So we appreciate them for doing that. And we have Christian here from Mike Keith Insurance, if you have any specific questions about policies or how they work. But I will stand for any other questions you might have.
The, under that cyber liability, when I read that, from seventy five hundred to seventy five thousand, twenty five hundred to twenty five thousand, what was that just an extraordinary increase in coverage, or what what did they have any explanation for what that incredible? Oh, I guess I'm asking you, sorry. Do you mind to come up to like, just in case, so, yeah, thank you.
That that particular company that you've been with for the last couple of years was taking a different position on their deductibles, I have to believe it's due to the number of claims. But they went from, as you saw last year, seventy five hundred on one line, I don't have it memorized, twenty five hundred on some others, they basically just ten X them and made it seventy five thousand and twenty five thousand. So our team, without you all even needing to tell us that those deductibles didn't look good, we went ahead and marketed your account, and because of what you all have done with all of your MFA, and we got to learn about all the MFA that you're doing and the things that you're still working on, we were able to get you eligible for a better product. It's actually a pay on behalf versus a reimbursement, but the same deductibles, and I actually think it's like a fifteen hundred dollars less than your renewal offer from the folks that wanted to increase the deductibles. So overall, it's you're in a better place, and it's a little less than what it would have been if we would have stayed, and the deductibles are certainly better.
So I could throw in two things, MFA is multi-factor authentication, so you have to verify two ways to get into our system, so it adds security. And then from my perspective, just past experience, cyber security insurance is is really volatile. I attended some league conferences a year ago where they weren't sure whether cyber insurance was going to be around, and so it was, they predicted volatility like this, so to be able to to find an alternative was was a relief.
And that speaks to the IT department and what they're doing, I had an opportunity to talk to Gary. Oh, there he is. And wealth of knowledge, thank you.
Yeah, we're really lucky. Yeah, thank you for that explanation.
You're welcome. Anytime you want to go in more detail, I love.
I was gonna say, you're like.
Yes.
Thank you, but no.
The offer still stands, if anyone wants to do a workshop, I'm happy, we can go seminars, we'll bring in lunch, go as deep as you guys want to go.
Sounds awesome.
Mike would love to go.
We've already done that. Or he knows how much I like what I do.
That's great, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Christian. Anything else for Christian? Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
And Gary, thank you, appreciate your department and all the good work you do. You must be must be under constant attack, right? Always.
Mostly body employed.
We'll strike that from the.
No, it's in there.
Motion to approve resolution is presented. Kushner.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Latari.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Euler.
Yes.
Thank you.
Item seven point two, a resolution for the twenty twenty five managed deer hunt. A resolution approving managed hunt program for twenty twenty five deer season presented by Chris Deal, Parks and Recreation Director. Hi, Chris.
Hello, good evening, mayor and council members. As stated in the memo, this is a resolution authorizing a managed deer hunt for the two thousand twenty five deer season in Warrensburg and also part of two thousand twenty six. This is actually the fourth year of the managed deer hunt program, and city staff works closely with Department of Conservation and on the regulations and the guidelines for the deer hunt, which are also in the memo and also listed for in the city of Warrensburg Managed Deer Hunt document that you have in your packet, which explains the rules and details of the program. There are thirty one hunters selected by random drawing for designated hunting areas at city park locations and other city property locations. Because of necessary construction, the wastewater treatment plant will not be open this year for the hunting season. All hunters will be required to attend a pre-hunt orientation where rules and regulations will be explained, and the Department of Conservation representatives will be at this meeting. Also, this is not listed, but in the past, staff has had to make several phone calls at the end of the season, reminding hunters to report their numbers. This is very important to the Department of Conservation, and it is helpful to have that information for their internal reporting. So in order to encourage hunters to call in this information, all hunters will be made aware at the mandatory meeting that they must attend, that if they do not call in their report, and we'll even do a reminder phone call, but these hunters will not be allowed to participate in the hunt next year. I would like to thank council member and also Park Board liaison, Jan Jones, for recommending this. I think it's going to be a suggestion that is going to provide some incentive for them to call in and give us the proper reports for the number of deer harvested. And last, you will also note the the map locations listed where the hunting will take place. Signs will be placed in these park areas, and the last couple of years, we've averaged around sixteen or so deer in this program. And Missouri Conservation has expressed their appreciation to the cities who participate. And all last ready questions, you may.
The only comment I have is on C three, that hunters must provide proof of completion of the hunter education program. It, they only required hunter education after a certain year, so people that are older than that don't have to have that certification. I don't know what year it is.
I would have to give back with you that, and that I'm not.
It's just that if you have somebody that's older show up and they say they don't have that, they probably never, they were not required to have it, and I don't know what year they put that in place. But I know my husband doesn't have to have it, my, our sons do, but my husband doesn't.
We absolutely would follow whatever Missouri Conservation has on that.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And that maybe, Councilperson Jones, you may make that as an amendment to the resolution to that the language would reflect hunter safety as required by Missouri Department of.
That would be perfect, I'll make that amendment.
Sounds good. University of Central Missouri, are they doing one about the same time, or?
My understanding is they are. I'm not sure their exact details, but I know they'll be participating this year.
I remember, so Jeff Ream from UCM is on the Environmental and Sustainability Task Force, and he said, I don't, don't quote me on this, but I know that there was going to be a break during Thanksgiving time for the hunt, so I think that's November, December timeframe, but with a a break for their Thanksgiving break or fall break, so.
I think last year they waited until the winter break.
Hmm.
In January. Is when the university last year, I think, started their hunt was in January. But it's great that they're doing it also.
Yep.
They have a lot of deer.
Further questions? Yeah, no, thanks. Thanks, Greg.
Resolution as amended.
Okay. Okay, Kushner.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Latari.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Euler.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appearances to the council not listed on the agenda, thank you very much. Sarah Chapman. Sarah, appreciate you coming up, so if you would just state your name and your address, and you have three minutes. We don't do any back and forth on this, we just listen for whatever, for three minutes, so go right ahead, it's all yours.
All right. My name's Sarah Chapman, I live at two eleven Hillcrest Drive in Warrensburg. I've lived in Warrensburg since nineteen eighty four. My husband came with what was then Gates Enterprises to work, and I have a business head to toe beauty salon on the corner of four oh seven North College and Cortland. I had worked downtown in beauty salons for many years before I purchased that building, and I purchased that building with a local banking because it was zoned for Central Business District where I had been located downtown for so many years, working for other people, so that was the main reason for buying that property, and I've been there since two thousand and four. What I'm seeking today is help and advice from you, because I've tried many entities in Warrensburg to find some help. I've never had two hour parking, I've never had snow removal. I have a wheelchair access on that corner, but I also do not have parking, so someone's always parked there at that corner.
Oh, right.
I've had trouble the last five years with a neighbor to the north of me that parks between four and six vehicles on my side of the street. And so to keep my customers safe, which I've done here for fifty three years, so nowadays after pandemic, I take care of age group that's most affected by that kind of thing. So sixty percent of them are on wheelchairs, canes, mostly walkers. And of course, I have liability insurance to get them on my sidewalk and so forth. But with no parking available to them, they have to park so far away. And I greet every customer in the middle of the street. And I greet every customer in the middle of the street. No one uses the sidewalk on the opposite side of the street where the parking problem comes from, because there's dogs off lead that chase them down the street, that sort of thing. Dogs on leads that bark continually at them. And I've noticed that even houseless people do not use that sidewalk. I have the only sidewalk on my side of the street because it was, I believe grandfathered down with Mr. Hans TV repair shop there. So I'm seeking help in how I get two-hour parking since I'm in the Central Business District and have always been licensed for business and doing everything possible to comply with all that. I would really appreciate it if the city could also put in the blue parking lines next to the wheelchair access because there's none on that corner.
If it's possible, could you stay after the meeting, after we're done here?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you, Sarah.
Miscellaneous matters from the mayor and/or city council.
I just have one piece of info. Next week, well, September twenty-eighth through October fourth is Missouri Good Neighbor Week. And I'm working with a group that are doing an event this Saturday and I didn't get, I didn't get a proclamation and. And so I just wanted to make folks aware that that is happening, September twenty-eighth to October four. And just encourage people to check that out and see that there are lots and lots, many thousands of people doing laborly acts around the state and encourage you to participate in that if you can.
Yeah, I have a little announcement. Last week, council management team attended the Missouri Municipal League Meetings down in St. Charles. Fantastic meetings. We got lots of great information. It's networking, but it's more of the lectures and the things we had. But we had two city councilpersons that received awards the other night. Very proud of them. So the first award was recognition as certified municipal officials. And that would be Jan Jones, Councilperson Jones and Councilperson Suzie Latari. So congratulations for that. And Jen didn't study enough to say, I want to do it again. So she went back and she is recognized her having the advanced certified municipal official for the state of Missouri. Very proud of you. And they got to go up on the stage. It was fantastic. Great event. And you got a nice, really nice pack of Missouri. Fantastic.
Thank you.
Anything else? City staff updates. Item ten point one, city manager report, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a couple of things. This afternoon, late afternoon, I sent an email to city employees and then sent you a copy as well. The subject line was that congratulations are in order. In case you haven't seen it and for those that haven't heard, Katie Taylor, our human resources operations manager, our human relations person, has been hired by the city of Merriam, Kansas. So for her, that's a terrific step forward in her career. We will certainly miss her, but wish her all the best. And Kristen Norman, I hope it's okay to share, her due date's right around the corner. So that's more planning that we need to do. Jessica Benverlo has agreed to serve as the interim director of administrative services. So we, Kristen and Katie and I all work with Jessica closely on a regular basis and we appreciate her willingness to step in. And then kind of supplementing all of that, we were able to reach out to Everest Drive Solutions, the firm that we've used for different things, including the city manager search process that they ran. Recently added to their team, hiring Megan Dodge, who is the HR director for Lawrence, Kansas. So they're available to provide on-call kind of as-needed HR services to supplement Jessica and myself. And then the other thing that I assured employees of is we understand probably the most important thing is payroll getting out correctly and on time. And Tina and the HR department will continue to be processing payroll like, like always. So as needed, people can go to Jessica with HR items and then she and I can confer and kind of divide and conquer as needed. And then she'll be the interim administrative services department head. So a lot going on, all really good things for the individuals who will adapt and overcome as an organization. So then lastly, I tried to assure the employees that we're committed to making this as seamless as possible from their, their perspective. And thanking, thanking for their, for what they do and, and their patience. The second thing I have for you is we've talked about as part of the, the budget and prior city council meetings, the possibility of block cameras, which are a brand name, but a stationary license plate reader. I just want to acknowledge you that I realize that's generated conversation in the community. We are staffing that through so that we will bring you kind of a good objective overview of that. And one thing that you might give some consideration, I don't think we do it all that often, but you can take action with a first reading and a second reading on a different date. So if you have a sense that this is a topic that merits kind of splitting those two decisions apart so that the community has an opportunity, it's just something for you to think about as we, we bring that forward in the near future. But I want to assure you and assure the community, that's not a staff-level decision that's just going to happen. That'll be, you may prefer that, but we will bring it to you with all the necessary information for you to deliberate on that and make the final decision.
Do you want us to hold our questions until a later time or during a meeting?
I don't know that we're prepared to take them tonight, but if there's anything in particular concern that you want to make sure that you want staff to be sure that we incorporate, you can certainly let me know that and we'll build that in.
Okay.
We're very aware of the, of the kind of nationwide community conversation about this topic and are committed to giving you a fair and objective overview of the topic so you can make an informed decision.
Perfect.
One question I, sorry, I would have is, and I don't want an answer, don't need an answer tonight, but is there a map of all the existing cameras and what do those cameras do? So if that could be part of the conversation.
That's a good point. I expect that we should be able to provide that.
And Jessica, thank you. I feel like you need like to clone yourself. You're doing so many things. So thank you for taking that on. I really appreciate it. And very sad for us to see Katie leave, but that is very exciting for her. Really, really happy for her.
I do have one question. Are we considering using Everest Drive to search for that position? Are we going to, are we going to put up it?
Yeah. So one of the things we want to be sure to do is synchronize that timing with Kristen's return. She'll be the one supervising that position.
Gotcha.
So we're going to be strategic about going, setting that process up so that it's kind of teed up for her. And be very involved when we return, whether that involves Everest Drive or not. Well, in all honesty, one of the things I told Kristen was I think this, I just add some sense of urgency to my reviewing the pay plan as well, because this will be a prime example of a key position that we're trying to recruit for. Kind of want to be sure that we're kind of aware of what the market.
Recruit and keep as much as we can.
Yes.
Yeah. So I kind of a three-part process there. Number one, diving into the pay plan, which I intended to do anyway, but stakes on head urgency. Then looking at the timing so that we're giving Kristen an opportunity to, to space in that. And then kind of sizing up the market, whether we need Everest Drive's assistance.
Thank you.
And I would say that from my point of view, I would prefer to have the flock conversation via over two meetings. That's, that's my preference. And lastly, Kristen, and I'm glad you're taking as much time as you can.
Absolutely.
All right. Item ten point two, city staff update, administrative services department. Item ten point three, city staff update, city clerk.
I don't have anything tonight.
Bless you. Item ten point four, city staff update, community development.
I don't have anything beyond what's in the written report. There is information in there that states that staff is not recommending or intending to increase building permit fees for the coming year. And so there is a great deal of detail in the report, but if you have questions, be happy to answer those.
Thank you for the detailed information.
Yeah, that represents a lot of work. So thank you for doing that. I just had a question. Do we have the goal or intention to try to be more in the middle of where all of these fees are? Is there any reason to think that way at all? I noticed they're sort of in the middle on one and at the high end on others, so.
I, I think you, I would have to pull previous years. We do this every couple of years to see if we've been more in the middle.
Oh, sure. This is just one year, really. Yes, I'm sorry.
I don't know off the top of my head what the history with the other communities are.
Right.
So we can look at that and bring back additional information.
Thank you. Thanks for all that work.
Yep. Thank you. Item ten point five, city staff update, fire department, chief Jennings.
Nothing to report. We've had some activities, so we will understand for any questions.
Thank you for your work.
Item ten point six, city staff update, Parks and Recreation Department. Ten point seven, city staff update, Police Department, Chief Mustard Manam. Ten point eight, city staff update, Public Works Department.
I'll remember them all, but I've got lots. A lot of my stuff is weather dependent. So with this rain, we're having some issues, but we're getting stuff.
What rain?
I know. It keeps going around, but they're calling for more tomorrow. So we'll see. But Lions Lake is drying out a little bit. We are hoping that the contractor will be joining us in the first part of October to actually start moving material. So there's been other discussions on what we can possibly do. But as we develop those, we'll bring those forward and see what we can get done there. The plant expansion out of both plants, the SBR concrete is being poured. I think the east plant is pretty much done and the west plant is getting poured this week. So lots of, I don't know if you all have driven west on fifty highway and you look out there, there's a big pile of dirt. It's like, wow, it's a lot of dirt. There's a lot of cones out there. A lot, yeah, a lot of cones, lots of construction stuff going on out there. If you all ever get a chance, pull in there and check it out. It's, construction's pretty neat. I think it's neat. Let's see, McGuire.
Where are we at?
We've actually, there from Rod to Colton, we have the, I think they actually did two layers of asphalt today because they're anticipating the rain. If they didn't get it done today, they're hoping to come back tomorrow and get it finished. And then we will, that would be, there'll still be a two-inch lip that we will come back after they finish all the way up and they'll finish that two-inch lip at the end. So the bridge over the railroad there on McGuire, we're hoping that our milling crew will be working on that later this week and we're taking it down. If there's any repairs, city of Warrensburg will be doing those repairs. And then we'll be coming back hopefully next week to put down the asphalt on the bridge. So it's going to be closed off for a short period of time, but as long as weather is good, we're going to get that done. There's all sorts of other things, SS4A, the emerging contaminants, that's all moving forward. Oh, yeah. I don't know if you've driven over in Hawthorne, they've got all that milled up. The milling company's here this week. They're going to be milling all over that long list of places that we have. And then next week, lay down, crew will be in and we'll start to see new asphalt all over. So.
Hawthorne was being swept when I drove in today, still.
They were staying late, wanting to clean it up to make sure they weren't having affected by the rain on that part. Sidewalk program, I think we're almost done with that. We're at our spending point. See, all been over on Warren. Where else were we? We, there was three other places that we were hitting. Some of them behind the hospital, we had a couple of spots where the sewer main had uprooted or sunk or something. So they had to fix those sidewalks to get rid of the tripping hazards. So lots of stuff going on. Start working on next year's street. Yes. And we had a meeting on that last week. So lots of stuff moving along. Any questions?
Do you want to show the membrane? I know you did here.
I had a chance to show each of the like officials, but.
Oh, yeah.
Joe Clifford got me a section of it.
Geo grid.
And it's going down the entire width and length of McGuire and it's just an added element that adds some structural stability to it. Keep it from heaving and cracking and over time. So that was something that we changed order, change ordered into the project. But we felt like the cost and, and return on investment certainly.
Yeah.
I do have a clarification. McGuire Street, I, when you said four inches and then you have, I can't remember how you referred to it, then two inches and that two inches, that's from like at North Street where the big detention thing is going to go into ground. Is that correct?
Yes. So the whole McGuire from all the the Walgreens, basically the Walgreen entrance, they're on the south of Walgreens, all the way down to Broad Street is getting a two-inch asphalt overlay. Where the emerging contaminants detention basin is going, we are going to mill that area and put down new blacktop.
Just to be clear for, avoid any confusion for people listening at home. It, it, but for the area that's the emerging contaminant section, it's being taken all the way down to dirt. It's being rolled to confirm the stability of the dirt. There's area where it's soft, there's areas four or feet deep or deeper that are dug out and reconditioned. All that dirt and roadbed is stabilized and there's a rock course that goes on.
Well, Geo grid, then the, then the base, a three-inch base, then a one-inch base on top of that. And then of rock, that's gravel, base rock. And then you've got one lift of three-inch or three and a half inch asphalt. Then you have another lift of three and a half inch asphalt. And then they'll come back in with a two-inch pavement, final pavement, which is a smaller, tighter rock and that will be the last page.
And the significance of that last two inches is all that other work is going to be done in sections. Leaving that last two inches would be one final pass, the entire road corridor to kind of tie together that road surface in one installation.
And when are the emerging contaminant, when is the design and, and?
So it's already designed.
Okay, so you're.
But we're waiting on the state to get back letters from SHPO and from the tribal. So SHPO is.
State Historic Preservation Office.
Yep.
Over a detention thing? Okay.
Federal, federal, there's a whole list of.
So what kind of timeframe are you thinking it's going to take for this? So that we're, no one's surprised, we kind of have a, what we think might happen, kind of.
So the timeframe that's in my mind.
Okay, that's good.
That's in my mind, is once we get the letters or the go-ahead from the state, that SHPO's come back, the tribal, we've already got a bunch of other letters saying that they're good. We're just waiting on those to it. Whenever the state sent them out, they said it takes sixty to ninety days. We're getting closer to the ninety days. So hopefully they'll be coming back soon. That's when we'll get the go-ahead from the state. The state is also reviewing the design that is at ninety percent. It was done by Burns McDonald. So they're reviewing that. As long as they don't have major issues with that design, then we will go ahead and we will put out our RFQ or RFP for the contractor to do the bidding. That's going to take at least thirty days. So we'll compile that, we'll get it out. Of course, we're going into winter. So a lot of people will be like, oh, we don't want to do this work right now. So hopefully we'll get the contractor in, we'll get everything set. So hopefully we'll get the contractor in, we'll get everything set up and in the spring we'll start digging and we'll be working on that. Hopefully by next October, we'll be done with that part.
So in the meantime, that two inch asphalt overlay will make it smooth, make the road feel cohesive. And then we'll have to come back in and do the emerging contaminants, which that project is, uh, all part in the dimensions, like one feet wide, ten foot.
Foot.
Yeah. And the dimensions of that basin are?
Uh, about twenty foot wide and a hundred and nine foot long. And then ten foot deep.
Under the roadway.
Yeah.
Okay. And it's, it could or could not possibly be capital that would be coming back to do that work.
Yep.
Right.
Uh, but capital would come back to finish the, once that's done, then capital would be the contractor that comes back to finish it?
Capital will put the two inch on to begin with, but then tearing up and putting him back will be part of that.
Okay. So it'll be whoever gets that contract.
Yep.
But we'll want them to put the same kind of.
Yeah, they'll put super paid back on.
The same, yeah.
We'll specify that it's got to match what they took up.
Okay, so a year from now, we may be digging it back up a hundred and some feet by twenty or thirty feet to put that back in.
Correct.
Not back in, put this new thing in.
Have some curb and sidewalk in that area. That's what we done at that.
Okay.
So.
Alright.
So recognizing the awkwardness of the time, of that timing, the, the benefit of all that is the emerging, the storm water, just, we, we don't have storm water, uh, detention currently. Then the, removing the emerging contaminants, getting the state grant funding for that. And then the state grant funding is actually subsidizing the, the road work at its overall savings to the McGuire project. So timelines didn't necessarily align and I'm sure the average person will look at it and say, we just fixed this. Why are we tearing it up? But there is a method to that and see improvements in cost saving.
Okay. And that I think makes sense to all of us. And I think at some point, I'm sure that's going to be part of the communication. We know what we're doing. Yes, we had a plan for this or maybe even early on, like.
We knew we were going to do this.
You know, in a, in a few months, you can expect this to happen. It was part of the plan online. You can go back and read all city council. And can you please remind me, you said it six hundred times, but what's, where along McGuire is that happening specifically that, that?
North Street to Emerson.
Warren to.
North Street.
North.
There at Arby's.
Gotcha.
North Street to Emerson, which is the block north, that half block north of North Street.
Thank you.
So that'll do away with the lake that accumulates there when it rains. That'll all run into the detention pond and then you already have the underground, um.
There is.
Uh, piping to move that away. So it goes to Shepherd Park, which is a retention or detention?
It's also a detention.
Detention pond. Okay.
But it's going to connect to the storm sewer that's underneath the ground.
Right. It won't be running on a ton.
Hopefully it won't let Shepherd Park, but there's other water that.
Yes, right. Okay.
So your point about dealing with the lake is the moral of the story here, that this grant, this approach allows us to do that with grant funds and overall project saving.
That's perfect. And unfortunately, Rossley will have to ask you this again.
That's fine. I'm here all day.
Don't forget to tip your.
Yeah, thank you.
Alright.
Thank you, Phil.
Thanks, Phil. Yes, city staff update, Warrensburg Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good evening, mayor and council. Thank you so much for your approval of the contract for services with the WCBB board. Um, we're really excited to continue telling Warrensburg's story for another year. We have a lot of, uh, projects in the works from our visitor profile study. I know I've mentioned that study before and I just liked, I keep mentioning the study. We wanted, the board wanted to have a study that was comprehensive and that we, we included from all seasons. And so that's why it's a, it's a, a year-long process. And so we know that our visitors sometime in, in spring may be a little different than. And we wanted to capture those, um, and have that different group. Um, so we're continuing to work on that. We are working on our website and then we'll have our, uh, visitor guide as well. We are preparing for the summer of soccer in twenty-six. And I think we have a lot of great, um, projects in the works and a lot of great community support for that. This weekend, I'd just like to highlight this weekend is going to be crazy and we're so excited about it. It is family weekend. And I visited all of our hotels today and we currently have two rooms available, uh, throughout the city of Warrensburg. So we have almost a hun, our, almost five hundred rooms and we have two rooms available currently. Um, so we know those rooms will be booked. Um, our community will be full of visitors. So do me a huge favor when you are pumping your gas or you're walking along the, you know, in our retail locations, the person beside you, give them a smile. You never know who they might be. Um, and I, that goes a long way. It goes, really truly does. So that's a little bit it. Again, thank you for approving the contract. I'll see you next month.
Thanks, Marcy. Forgot to mention Chris, uh, appreciate the Warrensburg legend going out. It looks great.
Yeah.
The new magazine.
Yes.
Fantastic. Hope everybody gets one or has one now. So. Alright, um, with that, we adjourn.